All right, I'd like to follow the order. I explore the steps of this slide.
....................................... Thank you.
This meeting has been advertised according to law posted in legal newspaper group of the Federal Property Protection Act by posting sale on the bulletin board, same on the bulletin board of this facility. Roll call then.
Chair, Mr. Plaian?
Here.
Dickinson?
Here.
Bushian?
Here.
Chowski?
Here.
Lowerton?
Here.
Walperly?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Calabasas?
Here.
Almanas?
Here.
Beatrice?
Here.
Over Desasen, uh, Solis from Rowan?
Here.
And Mr. Pedd?
Here.
Okay, first order of business would be the approval of minutes from the land's meeting, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm going.
All right, I'm there. I made a second by Mr. Dickinson. All in favor? Aye. Hey, I should have it. Okay. First order of business we'll go to is, uh, Joanne Brooks. Third time's the charm.
Yes.
Okay, folks, anybody that's going to testify tonight, would you raise your right hand? You sound like swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this morning tonight as proof and accurate, best of your knowledge.
Okay, if you want to state your business, we'll proceed with your application.
I guess you just wanted to find out, we had the same copy that you requested at this time.
Okay.
Um, and then to your part, so we wanted to find out now.
The third time's the charm.
First time's the charm. All right, Mr. Pedd, did you have an opportunity to visit the property and give us a verbal review for this application, please?
Yes, um, the, uh, you can see now, the question previously was the, uh, there were plans that were submitted that there were hand written mentions and we never had an accurate representation of exactly, uh, what the request was. Um, now you can see, um, and so Mr. Clancy being there in the last meeting, you know, survey the property is now accurately represented. Uh, I assume the applicant, you know, based on what's shown where the addition is, is a 25 by 30 foot addition? Yes. And you're looking for setback of 4.4 feet from Garden Terrace to 4.2 feet from Chestnut Street.
Correct. Is that next to the center?
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, so, uh, that, that would be a request, uh, of, you know, to have those setbacks, uh...
Variants, please. No other variants needed? Mr. Pedd?
I'm sorry.
No other variants needed?
Not that we're aware of.
John, would you give another variant, so called for the northwest corner, a 22 feet? If we gave 4-4, they could potentially extend the building over. Proceed, but I would just recommend that you get, to get, to give the bulk of, give the variants, as it's shown on their, on their survey. So there's no question, you know, that the building isn't moved over from the northwest portion.
Yeah, and more comments, you sort of in?
I've been here, I reviewed this, this application and as on any bulk variance, E variants, the board has to take a look at the uniqueness of a particular lot. This is a peculiar lot because it's bordered on both two sides by, uh, Chestnut Street and Garden. It's a sharp triangular piece of ground. Uh, then what the board has to be satisfied with, that the granting of a relief requested does not materially or substantially deviate from the intent of our ordinance, or does not, uh, present as a substantial detriment to the platform. I have a with note, I can, if John can compare, I believe since it does front two streets, there would be a 25 foot, there's two, actually two front yards.
Yes.
So our ordinance requires 25 feet. Uh, however, the uniqueness of the ground just would preclude that they'd ever be able to, uh, comply with the, the, our ordinance.
Does any member of the board have any questions for this applicant, or professional for our application? At this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to open the meeting up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this application, and this application only, please come forward and state your name and microphone.
Chair, I see no one, first in the face, I agree with you. Close the public portion of the meeting.
Okay, motion made, second to close the public portion of the meeting on this application for Mrs. Brooks. Okay, do we have a motion on the floor to approve this application?
I'm going to prefer the, they, they not be satisfied with the, with the board returning with the proper service.
Yeah, motion made by Mr. Opely, second of Mr. Dickinson, that we approve the variances requested by Mrs. Brooks. Now roll call, please.
Plaian?
Yes.
Calabasas?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Lowerton?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Nice, make a note, as noted, is that what you meant, that we'll have all two?
Oh, no, three, four variants, please. Yeah. 2, 3, 4, 4, 4, 4.
Yes, sir. Third time's the charm, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for our patience, and we're so happy to bring you back a couple times.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Have a good evening, guys. Good luck.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. What do we have to do now with, with your paperwork, or?
Well, you can, technically, the resolution won't be approved until the next meeting. Okay? And there is always a possibility of appeal. Uh, I would wait till, before your permits, to, uh, till, until we memorialize the resolution next month.
Okay.
Anybody? No, we, they ran it.
We ran it. Okay, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, the next order of business we have on the agenda would be for 419 East Third Avenue, Sarah Logan. Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Good.
I have most of the green slips from the certified mailings, um, that I had to send out to the local property owners as well, and counties, I don't know.
Did you send it to June?
And did you give June a list that you did send out to everyone in 200 pitches that you registered?
Yes, I...
And I got no three parts back, Tom.
Correct, I'm, I'm only missing three or four, and I hand delivered it as soon as possible.
June and, uh, okay, just give us the June.
Perfect, okay.
Here.
All right, um, so I want to practice by saying that I have been a life...
Let me square you in first.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Okay, if both of you are going to give testimony tonight, uh, raise your right hands, and you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this board tonight is proof and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
Okay, I'd like to practice by, I'm a lifelong resident of Running Me, 30 years, and, um, I did a homeowner and a tenant, I have the last tenant. Um, so, back in December, on December 21st, we suffered a hardship and a tree that was on a, a, a adjacent lot next to ours fell on our house and caused significant damage. And we've been living with a hole in our living room for about five or six months now. We're finally at a point where we're able to rebuild. And the fallen tree has basically caused a lot of damage to the facade and the railings of an existing deck, which lays on the street side of our house. And just, it sounded like they had a kind of peculiar setup as well. Our, um, situation is a little bit of an odd lot as well, as far as the house is concerned. Um, so the house actually, um, suffered significant damage on all three roof pitches. And the house sits on a hill, and the deck actually extends off of the elevated front of the house, and it covers a very steep and currently nonusable incline, um, which is on the front of the house. And if you look in the land survey, where the deck is, the incline is right underneath of the deck. Um, currently, the house is under rehab, we have our permits approved, and we're living in it while it's being reconstructed. And we're at the stage where new siding and, as well as new roofing could be matched to the converted sunroom if you all approve, um, our variants. So we would like to build a sunroom on the existing deck, because we believe that that would relieve our need to repair a virtually now unusable deck. Um, I do have pictures on my cell phone, if anybody would like to see them, the actual damage that was caused, but the, the deck is very much unusable at this point in time. Um, the deck also lacks primacy, considering that the deck is located on what is now considered the front part of our house. And I'll get into that a little bit later, why it's now considered the front part of our house, but it was not previously. Removing the deck entirely would cause very much costly landscaping, and would not appear to be an effective use of the current land structure, whereas a sunroom would be. The sunroom would also be very much more aesthetically pleasing to all of our neighbors and passing commuters, as compared to the now very much exposed deck. When I hand delivered, um, the notices to the neighbors, nearly everybody on our block said that they, you know, agreed that it would be a good improvement on our house. They wished us very much luck, a lot of them actually want to see it come to fruition, because they're tired of looking at this exposed deck. Um, in addition, the sunroom, after doing some research, because again, we suffered a hardship, we had to file with our insurance company, I did research, I found out the sunroom's going to retain 90% of its value versus the deck retains less than 60% of the, of its value. Um, so moving forward, the house was originally designed to be a setback house on East Third Ave. And if you look at the land survey, um, you'll see that our driveway's kind of longer than usual, as well as the house is kind of set back further than other houses on that actual street. Um, in addition, three of the houses, the original three houses on the block, actually our front doors do not face East Third Ave, um, two of our houses face Irish Hill Road, and one of the houses actually faces down the hill, not facing the street that we live on. Um, the deck was built prior to the newer construction across the street, so this is why I say it's a little bit peculiar. Um, so, the deck is technically on the side of our house, but now it would be considered the front part of our house, because now we have newer construction that was built back in 2003. So when my mom originally had the deck built, um, she had it built because there was woods across the street, it would be a nice place to go grilling, to have, you know, family get togethers, and then she passed away in 2003. A couple of weeks after she passed away, six new homes were built across the street, and now that is now considered our front yard instead of our side yard. Um, with the newer houses across the street, the only chance to improve this side of the house would be to either rehab, um, the deck as is, or to improve it aesthetically by putting a sunroom on where the deck exists, on that foundation. And we really believe that it would be more aesthetically pleasing, as well as more functional, to have a sunroom there. So, we hope that you agree with us.
I visited the property, um, I, you have your own sledding hill, that's very cool.
Yes.
You have your own sledding hill and your own yard, that's pretty cool.
When, when we were younger, it was much more of a sledding hill. These, these, our neighbor Frank Williams, many of you might be, um, know him, um, he usually has, you know, the power of proof.
Yeah.
Very early on, so...
Now, um, the, uh, I, I, I perfectly agree with you, I can, I can see the, the aesthetics of, of your house, you know, um, it would give you some privacy, and I think it would be aesthetically pleasing, I see where your, your driveway goes to the side of your house, and you could almost, you know, use it as, use it as additional living space.
Exactly, and then that's what the deck was originally, kind of, to expand the house, so we feel at this point that the sunroom would, it would extend even more.
So, so the existing, where the deck is now is roughly 15 feet off of the right way line, and that's where you're going to maintain the sunroom.
Mm-hmm.
So you're asking for a variance to allow the sunroom to be 15 feet or 25 feet required?
Yes.
Okay. And as far as your question raised earlier, when we started, you understand that if the board grants a variance, as far as the structural integrity, you said you're going to build it on an existing foundation, this board has nothing to do with the structural integrity of that foundation?
Correct.
You have to have, you know, your contractor, your contractor.
Absolutely.
Chris Pedd.
Absolutely.
We already have a permit to repair the deck, actually. Um, so, the foundation work would be, I guess, a value, we didn't want to know which direction we can go, but that question's already put to our contractor.
Is your house, the one that has the lot of skirting from the deck?
Yes. Yes.
And one of your parties, as it is, and now to repair it, more boards would have to be spliced in, so, probably rather than replacing the whole deck, we could, you know, possibly do something a little more.
Here's the, that house is one of the first ones built on that entire block.
I did the research, but it might be, it's 75 years old, and like I said, there's, we're one of the three originals that I'm aware of, at, um, Sam Polski's own, uh, 127 E, and then Mayor Murray Casey next.
I wasn't aware the deck is on the side of the house and not the front of the house.
Again, it depends on how you look at it, and depending on what, what year.
And, well, any questions for the professionals, the applicants? Anything else to add, John? Mr. Rowan, do you have anything to add?
No, it's just, as I said, Raino, the C variance is...
For the front yard setback.
... without judgment to the general law.
All right, um, at this point in time, I'd like to open the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application, this application only, please come forward to the microphone and state your name.
Move forward, the public portion.
All right, motion made, second of the closed public portion of this meeting. I like the motion on the floor that we grant the variances for the front yard step back for this application.
Move, various, grant, that's...
Mr. Dickinson?
Second.
Second by Mayor Calabasas, now roll call, Jim.
Plaian?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Lowerton?
Yes.
Walperly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Almanas?
Yes. Good luck, Pam.
Thank you so much.
Have a constructive morning when you're all done.
Absolutely, thank you.
Take care, guys. All right, the next order of business we have is Deluxe Bakery. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, Chairwoman.
See you.
See you.
Dave, have everybody that's going to testify up for her, anybody that's going to testify on this application, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board, or this board tonight, as proof and accurate, to the best of your knowledge.
Yes, aye. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. As you know, my name is David A. Thatcher, with the law firm of Thatcher, Pastor and Thatcher, here on behalf of the applicant, Deluxe Italian Bakery, Inc. Uh, for record keeping purposes, would be starting tonight, to provide the Secretary with proof of application, as well as a notice for the adjacent property owners, all the green cards, and the certified mail sheets were provided to the Secretary. Uh, this is an application for Deluxe Italian Bakery, as indicated, uh, involves a property located at block, lots 101, 2, and 2.01, block 147, with an address of 680 Pembroke Street Road. Uh, the property is owned commercially for a district. The applicant here is requesting tonight's preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a 1760 square foot building addition, uh, to one of the buildings located on the track. In connection with this application, there are a number of variances that are requested, most, all of them, I believe, are pre-existing in nature. And those are enumerated in the engineer's report, so I won't go through the process of, uh, enumerating them here. I have three witnesses I intend to elicit testimony from. The first is Philip Raccabono, he's the president, part owner of, um, Deluxe Italian Bakery. In addition, his family members are also here in the audience, his father Philip Raccabono, as well as his cousin, cousin, brother, Dominic. Look...
David, administratively, John's report pointed one thing out, I want to break this to the board's attention, because two, two members might have to reprove themselves. Uh, this is a commercial zone, but John pointed out that the, the present use on this particular lot is a non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use, which, it can continue. John raised...
I think I raised a question.
Yeah, the question.
Is it a non-conforming, or is this, is this addition an expansion of a non-conforming use?
If it is, Mayor and Nick would have to step down. If the board feels that this is just the minimus, that the building, this is just in solar area of what's there, if they feel that it is, then the only thing we would have to act on tonight, and Mayor and Nick remain in paddle, and we could just move on these C variances. Uh, but that, I think that's what your question was.
Well, it's a question, you know, we raised a question, is this manufactured and distribution that occurs here, which is not listed as a permitted use in commercial zone? Uh, if the board does not believe that's the case, that it's just a bakery, and that the distribution is ancillary to the bakery, then, then that would be a permitted use in his own, and, uh, the expansion could occur without the, the use variance. If you have a use that's not permitted in his own, even if it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, when you expand that, meaning a use variance, as this board has dealt with in the past, so, we raise that as a question, and we're unsure how the board would look at this application.
Well, just for the application, though, the rest of the board, um, I have visited the site twice this past week, um, after I received Mr. Pedd's letters, and Mr. Thatcher's reports, and all the plans. Um, it is my understanding that, basically, what they're trying to do is they have to replace one of their ovens. And it is a larger oven, and the conveyor belt is larger, which is going to need a bump out of about 20 feet at the very back of their property. Um, it's my understanding that there's going to be no additional distribution, no additional warehouse, like, nothing of that nature, everything's going to pretty much remain the same, other than this larger oven is going to require them pumping out the back of their building to, um, be able to handle the larger conveyor belt. Am I correct, Eric?
That's, that's accurate representation of what the testimony will be given tonight.
And generally, that seems to be an insert, it's a sort of loose use of what's already there.
Correct.
So I don't think it would be technically an expansion of that.
Right, yeah, because you've got a bigger oven than even a little base.
And you'd be moved for the bigger, is that correct, Dave? Uh, so I don't think, like, Mayor, you remain, well, we're not going to, I don't, from, if the tenor of the board, they don't feel as idle that this is an expansion of a...
Again, I'm speaking for myself, um, I'll hold the board, is there anyone here that...
I looked at the site, did that, is that just like where all the little doors were in the back, where it had the bumpers?
No, it's all the way to the left, Eddie.
Okay.
The next building, yeah.
I looked at the wrong building.
Yes.
I have no problem with what was suggested, especially the fact that your property's a good, not changing.
Does anyone else have any concerns? Okay, we can move forward. Thank you, David.
So as I stated, this is Philip Raccabono, will testify here tonight. In addition, to my right, is Mr. John Chiavo, he's project manager for Dantone Construction. Uh, and if this, um, proposed application is approved, then he would be the one responsible for the construction of the addition. Uh, to my far left is David Correct, who's a professional engineer with K2 Consulting Engineers, yes, that's right. Moving forward, I will start with Mr. Raccabono. Phil, can you give a poll, can you give your poll, eight to the board?
Philip Raccabono.
And, uh, you are affiliated with Deluxe Italian Bakery, is that right?
Yes, I am.
Would you move over here, so, uh, take, bring up your testimony here.
Yeah, I swear. You were sworn in, you, did you mention that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I give you, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony, sure, no one can dig this.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Phil, what's your position with the company?
Um, we're in the overseas, the whole, our operation, our bakery.
Okay, and, uh, just so the record is clear, what does your co, company specifically do?
We bake, we're a whole.
Okay. And, uh, how long has Deluxe been in business?
Been in business since 1929, um, we've been in this location since, since 1963.
Okay, and, uh, your grandfather was the one?
My grandfather started the operation, Dominic, that was him, uh, his son's husband, Sammy, took over, and, uh, pretty much right now, myself, Bill, and my brother Dominic are taking over, and we're one of the next generation.
Okay, very good. Dave, can you bring the, uh, system closer, please?
You would want this, Dave?
Yeah, A1, African Exhibit A1.
All right, Phil, let me show you A1, which is a site plan of your, of your track, correct?
Yes.
That's been marked for identification, Divident A1. Um, now, the track consists of two buildings, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, uh, where we're talking about doing this addition is the building all the way over to the right-hand side, correct?
Building over to the right behind the park.
Okay, and, uh, is that the first building that your, your grandfather, your family would have purchased?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then from there, be required this, this other, you can build onto that, is that right?
Build an addition onto that, and then you build on the air and the leaves.
Okay. Um, now, I'm going to call this the lower portion, because that's actually lower in elevation than, than the building to the left, right?
Yes.
We'll call one to the left the upper building. Looking at the, uh, lower building, what type of, um, operations are conducted in the lower part?
The lower part is consisting of, we made, baked all our products out, that's where our dough is made up, and that's where all our bread and rolls are baked and packed.
Correct. And then, uh, what goes on in the upper section?
The upstairs, upstairs section has a retail store in the front, that all our customers can come in, and purchase, and we have our office buildings, our, so, right to our store and above our store. The back end is all our warehouse, um, and our pastry department is building there also, I'm sorry, here, our warehouse is just of where our customers, the drivers come and pick up.
And the, uh, the upper building, uh, how much of that would you say, from a percentage standpoint, I'm just asking you to approximate, is dedicated to warehouses?
Warehouse, um, I came up with about 30,000, that's my guess, I have about four in retail, 45,000, 30,000, and about 7,000. And, give or take, I'm, we're looking at about 30,000 square feet of bakery area. But that's, that's the full back.
Okay.
Oh, the full back there? Oh, no, we're here, yeah, that's the full, yeah, that's the full, correct. Yeah, about, I guess when we talk about about 2,000 square feet of retail, about 3,500 square feet of office, and then somewhere around 30,000 square feet of bakery area.
All right, now, um, the warehouse, I assume it's where you store the rolls after the bake, correct?
All our rolls at the pack are all stored over here for the pickup.
Okay, let's look at the pickup. Does Deluxe Italian Bakery deliver the rolls itself?
No, we don't.
What do you do?
We have independent owner, operators that own their own vehicles, have their own insurance gathering registration, have their own fleet, they are not part of the lot. These drivers will put orders in through us, through our customers. Uh, these drivers will come to us and pick up product, and then take that to all their, wherever they make them, uh, we do not control drivers at all, working at all.
All right, and that is commonly known as, I mean, Red Wrap, correct?
Red Wrap, yes.
And those are then, any kind of contractors?
Any contractors, yes.
Um, I just talked about the number of employees that Deluxe Italian Bakery has, and why don't we break it down, uh, how many do you have in your office?
My office has seven employees.
Okay, and does that include yourself, as well as your other family members?
It includes five girls that'll store, we leave two, uh, myself, my father, myself, and Sammy, depending on that, there'll be seven, we leave twenty, sixty, seventy, four, my office at all times.
Okay, and, uh, that's in the upper section, right?
That's my upper count, I have a ton of office.
Okay, and, uh, the retail, how many, how many employees are in the retail at any one time? And the retail, how many employees are in the retail at any one time?
Two girls all the time, pretty much seven days a week. Two girls in daytime, maybe two more girls coming in at night.
Okay, so max of two at any one time?
Max of two, maybe only holiday, my other.
Okay. And then still looking at the upper building, the warehouse section, how many employees do you have in the warehouse?
In my pastry department, I have seven. They'll work in there. In my bigger tent, so.
Okay, between warehouse and pastry? Yeah, okay. And then looking down at the lower section, how many folks would work in the bakery?
About twelve.
Okay. Now, everyone's not all there at once, right? Can you kind of describe how the operations work? People come and people go?
Starting with my downstairs, I have about five gentlemen that'll come in, start doing my dough, pick up, and everything like that. They'll come in from about ten o'clock in the morning till about six in the afternoon. Then five guys will work through walls, make up all the bread rolls, and that's the dough form. Then when they leave, my oven men come in and my pack come in. Then back to me, they bake all the product. So it's the same kind of guys right there. And then they bake from about six in the night till about three o'clock for a lot of morning.
Okay. Now, when we were getting ready for this application, I think we figured out that you had like a max of twenty-five during the day?
Yeah, about twenty-five during the day and about twelve fifteen at night.
Okay. Now, where do those employees park? Is there an area of the track where employees are instructed to park?
All my employees are instructed to park from the side lot between the other house and bakery lot, where my big sign is. They all enter through the building, all their time clocks are right there upstairs in the building. They punch in and then they walk downstairs. I might have two guys in the park, two, three guys that will park down below the building during the daytime there.
Now, of those employees, all of them drive vehicles to work or some of them commute?
I have a high percentage of commuters that do take the bus towards the new rivalries. And they're the departments or the locals, whether that or where they're coming from. Speaking of a hot, always fifty percent of the people do commute.
Actually, looking at the site plan, we can actually see vehicles identified on this track, correct?
Yes.
And we were talking, preparing for this application, isn't it true that some of your adjacent neighbors park on that property?
Yes.
Okay. And when we talk about neighbors, I'm not talking about residential neighbors or anything like that. Talking about the other businesses?
Yeah, I... The ice house next door, since he has very little parking on his front, he has to give the police to park in the front, so he's a couple vehicles each where he usually is. This one in the corner is really the garage across the street with the thousand cars. He has so many cars that he hasn't a parking, so he has to park there too. We do have the room, we allow that.
Now, looking at, continuing to look at A1, we see a bunch of trucks up along the left-hand property, correct?
Yes.
And are those your vehicles?
No, they're not.
And who do those belong to?
They belong to a place on the...
And that's because his property is right up against your track?
Yes, his property is right up against ours. We work together, neighbors, and we allow it, and we just have to keep some space right there. When he leaves, he doesn't have to wait until later there, never bothers to check.
Okay. Now, there is dedicated parking spaces in front of the store, the bakery, right?
For the bakery, yes, yes.
Yes. And who are those spaces dedicated for?
Oh, retail.
That's for the customers?
Yes.
So none of your employees park in that front area, is that fair to say?
Exactly.
What's the hours of operation for this one?
Seven AM, nine PM.
And is that Monday?
Seven days.
Seven days a week? Okay. We talked about the red roof drivers. What is their operation as far as picking up and then dropping off for that type of thing?
Five red drivers come in between twelve at night till about nine in the morning. Spread themselves out and how far they're going or how local they are.
Can you identify on A1 where they're loading?
On the upper building, there's about seven, eight spots here at the top that has an overhead right here along the whole back wall. There's about eight doors that they depart to, they load up to. So we have twelve fifteen spot there at night. They'll drop.
Okay. And then so they load up, they take off. What happens when they're done their route? They come back or what do they do?
There's only about four or five drivers that will come back. Move better local guys that they can park their trucks at their house or wherever they live. So them drivers will come back, unload their rent box, park their truck in the lot, get in their car and go home. The other drivers will take their truck when they're done their ramp. They take their trucks and go wherever they go.
All right, so they're not coming back during the day?
They don't come back during the day. So come in at night, take their product, I don't see them till tonning.
Okay, so when they come back to pick up their next stage product, then they would unload their crates?
Then they would unload their box or crates at that two, three o'clock point.
Okay. Let's talk about the deliveries that you receive at the facility. And you get deliveries from... Well, let's talk about the lower building. Do you get deliveries to that area?
Yes.
And what do you get there?
I get ingredients, oak flour, cardboard, plastic supplies. I have pretty much anything that I don't get.
How often is that occurring?
Four to five deliveries almost a week.
Per week?
Per week down there, yes.
And that's a tractor trailer?
They're a tractor trailer.
Is the tractor trailer capable of coming into your property, turning and backing in off the street?
Off the road?
Yes.
Yes, most trucks, tractor trucks can actually come down, come into the road and make a full turn, head into a territory, all the way around, and then pull their back end into my... That's actually the spaces there where they can probably be back in. Some newer drivers, people, so you have a little problem, they'll pull over and they'll have to come over there. But it is capable of making that turn.
Okay. The deliveries up at the top, the upper building? And what kind of deliveries do you get there?
I get stale bread removal and I get pastry delivery deliveries. Probably three deliveries a week on top.
That includes both pastry deliveries and the stale bread removal?
Yes.
Pardon me, just follow along the deliveries. I just had a question. You go on your, like the flour trucks that get delivered. I had a question for you. When they approach your property, like by the books across the street, they generally have to, you know, cross over both lanes, the back end, pick up the windows and the side and whatnot, the flour trucks, when they're backing in view, is that the same situation or are they able...
Same with the roadside delivery. Actually, truck in our lot, right out there to stop the traffic over there. Our flour delivery is actually a full driveway, a long wall of upper lower property. So the swing actually doesn't help, but they have to go right down this driveway and back there, back to their property to fill the two flour silos in the back. So what they normally do on our flour though, if they're coming with the eastbound, they can stop here and then just back right in there. They don't have to come and cut the whole road and stop. But we all use it. What he'll do is he'll pull up here in my lot, let our neighbors know, they'll come outside.
The only reason I'm missing that now at this juncture, because before they have the application, we're certainly talking about first, but that needs, I'm just trying to make sure we have the site triangle and...
Yeah, I think we do need that of this bottom part for the tractor trailer to come in that right there.
Thank you.
Let's talk about the building addition itself. What is the reason why you're looking to build this addition?
We removed an oven. We originally had two ovens. We removed an oven about seven months ago. We're replacing the oven. The new style oven is about three feet wider. That was based on our ability to just clear and get that oven removed was the original oven here from nineteen sixty. It's starting to look bigger. We don't have the space. What this enables us to do is get rid of this oven, move our conveyor's over, and give us that room that we just... We really need like four feet of this to get by, but to do four feet makes no sense. So if we're going to do this, this gives us added space. What this also does, there is a trailer that sits here in my heritage that delivers the cardboard every day. That trailer comes in, sits there, gets removed every week. That trailer will be there now. That trailer, when the truck unloads, it will just take the product, put them right into that spot and that'll take up that actual...
So instead of that cardboard being outside of the trail or will that be inside?
It'll be inside. Close and filled, yes.
Okay. And the oven that you're replacing, the new oven will be larger than the old?
It is. It's about two feet wider just because of the way they're going now.
Is the new oven any more energy efficient than the old?
Yes, a lot, about forty percent more.
Okay. And will this expand your output or your operations as far as the amount of rolls you're going to increase?
It'll keep my business the same and go from there. It'll be more energy efficient on that end, but really replacing one for another.
Okay. And we indicated that the additional space in the warehouse, if they don't need it, that's just going to be for storage and have to be, storage of materials have to previously be outside of the trail, correct?
Correct.
And you're agreeable to removing that trailer, not having a trailer there after you build this addition?
Absolutely.
Okay. There's also a number of, the engineer commented of a number of trailers in the rear, correct?
Yes.
And what is your proposal with respect to those trails?
We're going to remove the, these three trailers right here to the ground. One above, get rid of them. We have one more over here which we will get rid of. That one is people off these two of them.
They have the equipment, correct? They have all the equipment?
They have all, what they have, they have all the equipment that's consorted at a time for emergency use. And we can go through and we're going to point out where we're currently working for that, clean that up.
All right. One of the things you're asking of the board tonight is to create your both preliminary and final site plan approval, correct?
Yes.
Let's talk about the time you've already ordered the oven, correct?
Yes.
So where's it coming from?
Slovenia, which is down near the Czech Republic, which is outside of Europe.
Okay. And that has the anticipated delivery date, correct?
Yes.
And when is that delivery date?
That delivery date is September first.
And so you need to try and get this addition completed before the oven's delivered, right?
Yeah, we really didn't think this was such a project.
Couldn't go to see her.
Yeah, we, well, we ordered the oven. We would have done back in April. And I guess just worrying and going ahead and seeing the project and wanting to know what we needed to do, didn't anticipate the actual addition coming in. And then when they came in, eventually they could have planned. We were running a couple of sure inside that addition. And I guess adding in, look, all this is thought, it's a time period, it's getting closer and closer to this day shift, one of them coming over and the expense on putting out this oven, we're sort of...
Do you have any knowledge as to whether they're still on schedule as far as that anticipated delivery date?
We just made a phone call last night with them to see if they are on schedule. But as of two weeks ago, everything was right in schedule. That was the date of estimating, leaving their port to the port of New York or Philadelphia airport side of New York, that they were looking at September first.
So even if you do get preliminary and final site plan approval tonight, still going to be?
So you can grab it. It's still going to be how you work and try to see what you're comfortable with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shiova, you can identify yourself, please?
John Shiova, Ganton Construction.
And your contractor, David?
Yes, that's right.
Vice of West End, New Jersey?
Good job. You step over to the white so we can report you, please, thank you.
I'll be south of CP's area.
Okay, excellent. I'll be along your end.
All right. And you've been engaged by Deluxe to construct this addition, is that correct?
Managed construction, correct.
Managed construction, okay. Can you describe what the addition will look like?
Yeah, exactly, for sure.
The building's going to be...
We want this identification?
A2. The existing building is a pre-engineered metal building, which is the most cost-effective type of construction for this operation. Seacoast is a world-class manufacturer. Big metal buildings, they have a model that fits the need for the Deluxe Bakery. The side that we see at the bakery now, it'll just be assimilated, except it'll be twenty people like loaded, twenty people like by eighty-two. And it's a good quality building and, you know, it's not going to change the present of all that much. You can do it.
Effectively, you're going to come out even all the way across.
It'll be straight.
You're not going to have that jagged look to it, it's going to come out even.
Here, still have that ten-foot kickout where the two glass windows are down below. Here, it's going to back far over out like that. Yes, it's going to be back in a smooth, clean look.
That portion of the building's to be removed, floors, they just, of the, of the new foundation, new slab to match what's existing. And when you look at the building, once it's completed, what you'll see is just one straight block.
And do you mean the type of material that's going to be used for that?
It'll be steel, manufactured steel and siding. She was...
Will that be consistent with what the...
Yeah, it'll match just with that, yeah.
Okay, fine, thank you. Dave, you want to discuss the parking arrangements up front here?
Sure. All right, this is a confusing part of all of it. I'm trying to make it as simple as possible. We have the respective parking in the existing addition. We have twenty-one spaces out here, and that's part of their basic needs reserved for retail use. The retail use, though, is really only about two thousand square feet and pretty ordinance. That's almost basically four hundred square feet. Only really requires five parking spaces, but I think with the amount of customers and turnover coming in and out, you know, I think the turnover's like about five, ten minutes tops on each customer. I think we have, we just, there's a little more parking, I think, for the retail customers than required, but during busy times, Christmas Eve and things like that, it certainly helps. As we discussed before, employee parking is along this side and this area here. I want to understand the trucks, the delivery trucks that come in. Mr. Recibolo has testified that some of them bring their own cars. They drive their own cars in, they take the truck out, and those trucks and cars just swap each other in this location. So it's kind of like car comes in, he gets in the truck, truck leaves. So the car kind of takes the spot of the truck, and I think the drivers all work together to make sure that each of them has a parking space out here. Once again, this parking is for the ice business over here. And then there's a couple more parking spots for trucks back here. Additional area is available, maybe unused, and there's really no formal striking out in the parking lot. I think everybody's just as used to the traffic patterns at this point. They know where to park, they've parked there for years, and they just continue to keep with the current patterns that they're using. Once again, testimony was provided that there's two or three cars maybe parked in this area here. These are also employees. So what we did is we tried to analyze the parking, tried to compare it to the zoning code, which was not really the easiest thing to do. What I was able to come up with, I guess, for the sake of argument or variance is with the retail two thousand square feet, we need five spaces. With the offices of about thirty-five hundred square feet and three hundred, one parking space for three hundred square feet, it's set at about twelve. So five to twelve is seventeen, and that's for the retail and office area as part of the building. Then we have the thirty thousand square feet of bakery area. What I was, what I did is look with the access of some kind of like ordinance requirement for that, I tried to incorporate the industrial parking requirement of one space for six hundred square feet. Now, we're talking about thirty thousand square feet, you're talking about fifty parking spaces. However, the number of employees in the facility really at any one time max is about twenty, maybe twenty-three? Twenty-five, and that's including the office personnel and the retail, the two girls that work the retail. So with that, we have twenty-one out here, two or three over here. I mean, you can see the number of cars out here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. I mean, you can obviously see there's plenty of room for parking for the employees, plenty of room for parking for the customers. Employees obviously are really, and I guess if you want to call it scrambled parking type situation without having delineated striking and things like that, you know, they're used to the circumstances. What we really wanted to protect was the retail portion of it and make sure that that's remaining striped and there's sufficient parking for retail. Obviously, there's no expansion on the retail, we're the office space here. So we feel that this parking is sufficient. If we went by the ordinance, you know, it would require fifty parking spaces per, for the bakery use and another seventeen, and then that's sixty-seven. And we obviously do not have parking for sixty-seven, but we don't need parking for sixty-seven people. So that argument, I hope, supports the request for the variance from providing the sixty-seven parking spaces when it's fairly clear that there's an empty parking for both employees and resale customers. So that's kind of the best I can do to sum up the parking situation. It's something to meet, obviously, to remove the application to see with the combination of three different uses. And then one of the uses, the larger use, the bakery, not really having a parking requirement. And the best we can do there is really apply that to the number of employees that need to work the bakery at any one single time, which I believe is the shift from ten and to six P M. which I believe is the shift from ten and to six P M. So, and speaking with Mr. Recibaldo, there's really never been an issue where there wasn't enough parking on the side. So we're confident that we have enough parking to, to handle and accommodate both the resale and the bakery businesses and the employees involved with them.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about traffic circulation, and before we do, I want to ask Mr. Recibaldo some more questions with respect to that. You indicated earlier in testimony that the drivers pick up along the back rear and the rear side of the upper building, correct? Okay, and after they pick up, generally, which way do they exit the premises?
Mostly, all my drivers, they pick up, since there's usually a truck right next to each other's truck, they pull straight out. When they pull straight out, they come out here and exit out here. That's almost ninety percent of my drivers. Because the way that parks, if you're coming out of here, you're going straight across, you're rolling here. I do have a big dock here, where I can put a bigger truck in, so they're, they're necessarily around here all the time. Coming in, most of the trucks that are coming in are coming in this way. I've got a couple that will be coming down, they'll come in this way. Very few will ever exit here to retail and, maybe later in the afternoon, when a guy's leaving at seven o'clock, which is, no, our cars in the lot, they'll leave that way. Most, that's your push, non-essential truck park is through this bigger side towards the ice house.
And as far as, generally, does the downtime of a customer in, in the bakery, making purchases, does that matter?
My retail customers, three, four minutes. If you want to talk, now we have three from the outside, three, four minutes, we're turning people over very quickly. I don't think anyone ever sat there. We did five minutes.
Dave, now I know the engineer expressed a lot of comments with respect to circulation, and a little bit of the hazardousness with respect to the parking area. Do you have any proposal with respect to try to clean this up somewhat?
Yeah, we did. We, we took the variance comments into consideration. Obviously, concerns about sidewalks, concerns about having, you know, designated parking stalls and things like that to help, could really kind of clean up a lot, make it more, do you want to call it efficient? I mean, not that it's operated inefficient now, but maybe a new driver might not know where to park, so, you know, we were considering doing a fair amount of striping improvements. Number one, to kind of channelize the driveways. Number two, to provide some kind of pedestrian walking path, like a crosswalk type of situation as opposed to a sidewalk. I mean, we do have an asphalt pavement surface out here, we do recognize that, you know, the curb cuts are pretty vast. I mean, they extend from here to this island here, and then they extend pretty much all the way the length of the property, all the way down past the Heritage School. So it's kind of like one big, large, open curb cut. So taking the engineer's comments into consideration, we, we put together a preliminary striping plan, and it's preliminary. I mean, we are more than willing to work with your engineer to finalize this plan, and obviously work with, with our client too, because they're more, obviously, way more familiar with the daily traffic patterns than, than we are as, as the engineer, so.
Let's start with regal one. Should mark this for addition, because this is, should mark this as A three.
Oh, that did it, the striping plan?
Yeah. Yeah, we called it site boundary two. Site boundary one.
Site boundary two.
So what we put together, and like I said, this is preliminary, but what you see is, we're kind of grabbing what's this little piece of sidewalk here, and more or less extending a crosswalk all the way down to the end of our property line, across the asphalt.
Which is, this is really just small back here.
And, and that's designated in one. I, I tried to contrast the colors, you know, with white and yellow. The yellow, the, the yellow is a hatching pattern that we tried to use to designate where the trucks should be needed. Try to prevent them from, you know, just kind of haphazardly going. So we provided a thirty-foot wide driveway here, and we're providing some yellow hatching here to discourage people from just haphazardly just entering the site and using more of the channels. And also, we're providing a payment act, a payment striking in the, in the form of directional acts. Similarly, for this area here, we're providing a small opening here that kind of lines up with the roadway itself. On the opposite side, I think that's Third Ed, if I'm not mistaken, right? Okay, I'm sorry, Irish Hill. So I didn't want to make a conflicting situation with the traffic coming off of Irish Hill, so I tried to line this driveway up with the, with the roadway for Irish Hill. And that's really for the employees, so that's kind, so you have your trucks that come in here, you have your employees that come in and park here, and then you have your retail. What we did is we set up a driveway here for retail, for people to come in, a two-way, and then we set up a one-way driveway in here, and the, the existing dimensions are about twenty feet between the parking stalls. So we figured a one-way type of traffic pattern is probably appropriate for, for the width of the existing access lane. And so retail customers can enter in here and then just simply swing back out, out the other side, or they can enter in here and park here, or park at this area here as well. And then we also opened up, we, we're proposing to hatch out another area over here, and then leave this open for the, and to guide the delivery vehicles that are, trucks that are going to be accessing the little dock here. So it's a combination of a couple different openings, we're really just proposing to use striping to seal it off rather than putting in full face canic curve out in the roadway. And the reason for that is, the truck movements aren't necessarily, you know, exactly going to be thirty feet wide, sometimes they may have a hotbed curve. And I'd rather, you know, I prefer that they have the option of at least putting, running their wheels across a curb cut and just, you know, running it across the hatch pattern as opposed to pulling a full-fledged curve there, which will make it more difficult for the trucks to enter. So that, that's what we were proposing, and like I said, this isn't a final plan, this is a preliminary plan. I, I, you know, I need to go over it with, with our client, because we just didn't have time to, to put it together between the, the period of the holiday and everything, to put it together for tonight in a final version. But preliminarily, this is what we're looking at, and then we would work with your engineer too, if he had any recommendations for other improvements, we would definitely work with your engineer as far as any additional striping improvements and things like that. Once again, you see here, this is just the, the retail striping. We re-striping, I understand we're, we're more or less going to seal coat the, this area here too and re-stripe it. I'm also proposing to formally stripe some parking stalls here, and formally to stripe the employee parking stalls here. Give us a little hatched area between the parking stalls and the building so people can walk safely. And then also provide some striping for the trucks slash driver's car that come in and swap the trucks out. Right here, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about eight spots here to accommodate these vehicles. We added another four down there, although we only see two trucks. And then for the Ice House trucks too, we provided a number of parking spaces for the Ice House trucks. In total, there's twenty-three spaces for the trucks, and from what I understand, actually, the bakery only needs seven, is that correct?
I've never had one of the seven trucks in my lot.
So, so a lot of this is, yeah, a lot of this really, or half of it at least, kind of accommodates the bakery that we've, you know, developed a relationship with and, you know, kind of co-used.
Aren't the trucks that make deliveries really sound like?
No, all my trucks that make deliveries are sixteen-foot tall trucks.
Yeah, by the way, that's a good point. These parking stalls too are, are twelve feet by third, so these are a little bit larger than your...
The top thing they did, they do cuts and all that kind of stuff, just to give where the curb and the five-way beat, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I mean, that, that's our response to, to the engineer's recommendations for sidewalk curving curb cuts. Obviously, striping, formal striping throughout the parking lot to try to clear the parking.
And it's important across the street where the, the, I don't, side, and that, and back to here, they have to jack the cab in because it'd be blocking the road.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, obviously, there's a fair amount of activity, and you can see, you know, this is one, if you're looking at the area, you can see this is one of the lots that has the larger spans of asphalt of, of some of the properties around. And you can see there's a fair amount of vehicles on, on either side, both sides of the street, and, you know, we feel that installing curb across there might create more potential problems for this, this, the circulation patterns. What we're trying to do, though, is, is allow for that overage, I guess you want to call it, but try to at least give people a visual channelization that they can use and use as a guide to access the site and entry.
You don't have to leave their sign to accommodate that lane, do you? And he loves the sign, you're saying?
No, 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 the sign is actually located on...
That's off mine, that's off state here.
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to be located, it's going to remain right here, this little grass island that you see here. So that's why we stopped our hatching pattern here, and then this is an opening, started a hatching pattern, another opening, hatching pattern, opening, hatching pattern, opening, and then hatching pattern to...
Basically, you're proposing just to make the paint over the asphalt?
The paint over the asphalt, yeah, to provide drivers' vehicles with some guidance as to where to access the site. Obviously, with the large curb cuts and, you know, people are coming, they're kind of, I, I, from what I understand, there's really never been an accident here or any kind of...
No, I spoke, I spoke to Chief Diana today, and I spoke to Art Marshall of Murray today, I had some very public safety issues, and they confirmed the address. But having said that, we have had some instances where residents in Kansas got sidewalks, you know, there, in one of our areas. You know, there's no sidewalk, and I think people kind of feel like they're, they're kind of like taking their life in their hands, and they walk down there, it's just like, you know, they're, they're out there for the, you know, they don't feel perfectly safe out there, I've had a number of people bring this to my attention.
What are your thoughts, John, as far as what we did?
Well, we put our quotes in our, in our review letter, but I think what they just put on the plan is a set in the right direction. You know, the question is, do you accept the striping, or do you feel the, or the sidewalk? With respect to, to get a step back, with respect to the number of parking spaces, I don't think this addition is going to increase the need for parking. So whatever parking spaces are out there today, I think it is a pre-existing condition, so whatever variance is there, is what we needed, I think is, is a pre-existing.
We have something that we never have before, at least, that's true, this is probably where I was supposed to be walking, anyway, especially a truck, you know, people say, we're parking.
Yeah, and...
Because he's real high. That's what we're trying to set up, just trying to give them time to get, you know, put in a proper, we think, plan.
But to me, the bigger issue is, they need to go to the county with this application. They need county approval for this addition. And I'm just curious to see what the county engineer is going to go and say when she looks at this application with this runage, with no curb cuts, with no, no definition, where you can go in any, anywhere, anywhere, anyhow. And I'm just curious to see what they're going to say, and, you know...
That's my only concern.
And I mean, at the parkage, everything is fine, in sidewalks, the borough and the county have, have put a lot of money and time to curbs and sidewalks and shoe-in.
And you've been...
And, and things like that. So that would be the only, I, I think for the striping where the cars, where the trucks pull in, I think that makes sense, because there's really no cars going in on that one side where you're going to have it. The retail area, you know, this might be an opportunity, I know it's expensive, and an opportunity to, to make this up a little bit.
One thing I sort of commented on, I, I think we, it cost me, it cost me, I guess, if we were to have to place sidewalk and curb, the length, you'd have like the track.
I'd say, yeah, I'm not saying, I just thought that, you know, maybe something...
If you look across the street, if you look across the street at the, at the air station, they have a pretty small amount of their area with curbs and sidewalks. But at least it's defined, and what it does, it starts over there at the corner of Irish Hill Road, and it continues on to the property line of what used to be Forks Property. If you look, if you look at that gas station, there's, there's a egress, ingress, there's two, there's two, there's two curb cuts. And then there's curb, and there's concrete, then there's, there's asphalt, so there, there is some definition there. Now, if, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, myself only, but if we can perhaps at least get some type of, of, of that type of definition, you know, to front, basically, we don't, I don't really think we need it where the delivery trucks are, maybe there are egress and ingress. I think perhaps if that is somehow chained off or something, put some plowders in there and make that almost like a circle lot, that would be pretty positive, I think, to say, this is where the, you know, this is the stop where the trucks are going to be. And then perhaps do the, the formal curving and sidewalk from that point across the, yep, yeah, yeah, from that point forward up across the retail. Where Sammy's parking spot is, right there. And then, and then just that, they would at least give definition, so with the retail, because most, I think most of the traffic that we're worried about is the retail people going in and out. And that's the, that's the area that if we put that defined curb cut in with the sidewalk, that might...
Yeah, I mean, the county schools is, as Chief points out, I don't know if you're aware, the town halls, but the buses for the children, so kids have to walk. I know it's on the lot, kids walk and things like that, it's something that I was very conscious of. County, as you can see, when they repaved, they gave them a little tiny sidewalk, would have been really nice if they would have dug the entire length, but they didn't.
They only paid, they only gave something.
Well, that's it.
No.
They didn't do much, and they did all shoe, uh, shoe-in after they did it, of course. And that's what the county helped us fund, Eschen, remember, the sidewalk for high school for fifteen years. I think maybe something in between, but I, I guess you're right, if this board were to approve something, it'd say there's some kind of modifying with the striping, curving, and sidewalk. Just think, the county would still have to take a look at it, inside of those curb cuts.
I had a conversation with Mr. Recibaldo, and I'll be shocked if the county allows that, would remain as is.
Does it help if we pass something that says we're okay with the wire area, does that make a difference? No? Okay.
Have you ever met the county?
I have no experience with that.
It, it's a safety issue.
John, you think if, if they propose to what we just chatted about, do you think that would help put the county at, at a use of work time to make them define?
I, I think anything they propose to improve the situation is a set in the right direction, and if, if the borough, if the borough reaches out to the county and says, and says, you know, you think this helps, we like the project, it, it can't hurt. And maybe it's a thing to matter setting down, if the county would say, this is what we would like to see this continued.
Well, the county's much more friendly than the state when it comes to making a curb cut.
I just said, like I said, they're going to, they're going to look at safety. If we improve a, a partial, a large curb cut, or a large open asphalt area, we, we say at this board, it's okay with you, just think...
Well, I think the advocate is proposing to do some improvement to up the lineage, traffic circulation, pedestrian rotation, so it's not as if you're approving, you know, something we've done here. There is some, some improvement.
I don't think this board has, has the authority to say the curb cuts from here...
Right, we don't have.
It's up for the county to say where, where those curb cuts are going to be. You can say, we, we, we endorse this plan, the county wrote it, right?
The county wrote it, there was, there was a county... I put something up.
Right.
And they said, you know, still to come, that they have to be, I'm just saying, for every...
Yeah, because really, all the improvements would be in the county road, the sidewalk, the driveway.
Maybe they have to have two-way driveway into the retail, you know, next to, you know, the driveway on this and Irish Hill, say that's too close to that, I thought, get rid of that.
Yeah.
River and Crosswalk, I guess.
Yeah. I understand there's concerns with the traffic and circulation pedestrians, but we're also, it's a fairly small addition in the overall scheme.
Without doubt.
And to do significant site work, you know, it's, it's going to be a cost factor for fully out, I think.
Well, I agree with what John said, and what others think, but no matter what we recommend, it's going to have to have county approval anyway, so, I guess, we're comfortable with...
What if we do it subject to county approval?
It's always, it's always this.
Would you, would you recommend then we just kind of leave this out and, or submit this to the, I, I mean, you know, obviously, an approval would have to be made.
Well, I think, I think this board is looking for this as a...
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Okay, okay, from me, it's, you know, I, I would like this to some some...
Congress, I want to...
Yeah, it's, you know, it's just something that, we just passed the land use ordinance for staying sustainable in Jersey, and one of the things that that says is the road pedestrian walkways. The borough has, has put a lot of money towards this, we're doing areas as much as we can, we can fill in, we can be filling, and we continue to do that.
But again, it says county road, it was a, and it decided, say...
They decide.
They decide. If we were on a municipal road, if this board, if this jurisdiction said, you want one side or one side?
That's not, that's, sorry, this board can determine if they want a sidewalk here.
Well, it's...
We can't determine, we can't determine the curb.
The county should say no.
Can, can it say no?
That's true, if this board can say we want, and the county can say no.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I...
They may say, we don't want that, this would create...
White, yes. They want, they want to do our curb cuts as we propose, like you have one curb cut down here, one curb cut near, we want one way, one two-way, stuff of that nature.
Well, what can we do for them?
County, you remember one time the county come in and they said they were holding ten, seven and a half foot over that side of the road, when they said they could do it all on Clem's street, right? Way back when, I remember it. Can't relax our state, it's... Does anyone know if the county has a formal plan to do anything with county road, because the coverage, the county, if you get involved and say, okay, put some curb and sidewalk, I mean, it's significant. I ran some numbers on behalf of the Deluxe Bakery, in consideration of possibility, and it's probably close to three times the cost of the... And it's probably close to three times the cost of the new build. New buildings over a hundred thousand dollars. You get five hundred foot front, you could go on a size, two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand to do the.
No, we're not building something like that.
Well, if it's still, if it's a camera. But if you only need a bigger number to do.
That's a lot of brain.
Yeah. Or it's not a business. I mean, I've got to look at where do I go on? Cost per unit, being part lot, where do I pay a lot of?
I don't know. There was a big force to do that to get rid of this, I mean, obviously, it's something. But the other, the other businesses in the area would not be mandated to do the same improvements. So now you have this one area.
Right, now, we're, we'd be aware of, you know, that that's your area, you can do it as well, but, you know.
Again, those improvements they made were, I think, were over a million bucks for them.
But that request pops up every time there's something done on Front Street Road. What are you doing for the children to have the road straight there?
Is that accurate?
They hit it.
We have five hundred for the front.
We did shoe what happened, the county did shoe what happened for less than a half million dollars. The entire road came up close to the truck.
I'm going to talk about curbs.
Sure, I have an account.
Sit down, really have a better understanding of what we really want to do. I just don't want this to hold off building the something that doesn't have the kick out.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to open the question by it.
If approved, the building addition tonight, the front of the way it is. It's a question of what, what does this board want done to the country? The county's going to require what they want. But there's, you know, you have different interests. Well, you have the same interest, but the county's going to require them to do certain things. And it may not be the same thing that this board wants them to do. So if you grant an approval and the county does something less than what you ask, what you think, you may not build yet. We're going to come back. If you have that location.
Application goes tomorrow. Usually wait until. As a matter of fact, I can't even submit an application, because I didn't have a data from the secretary that this, uh, a resolution from the board. Yeah, the county, the county application require a resolution from this board to the county as part of their application. And have it signed off by the, the secretary.
Company combined.
Our county application has to be signed off by the, the board secretary when we submit to the county.
Has been an approval or did it, there was just an application submitted?
No, no, there was an approval, there was an approval.
Can the county, can the local?
Yeah, and I had to have, I had to have June's endorsement on the application. Yeah, that's what's out of work.
So you want to, you need a memorialized resolution?
The county needs the board secretary's endorsement on the physical application itself, so when I prepare the application, I get to send it.
The application is approved here.
Yeah. Have I started granting preliminary approval to see which building? And I've got to do this on that.
Yes, exactly. Doesn't have to be a memorial?
Well, no, no, the county, I think, just wants it, it, it pays for that, so that's wait for the next resolution.
No, it doesn't have to wait until the resolution.
Just another pay.
Well, I just want to see, the, 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 the family has always been, I think, a good, a good neighbor. They, they've always, I think, tried to help the community in any way they can, uh, they were asked, I think, in good neighbors. Uh, I trust you've tried to make a good project out of this. I do think that that property that you're, uh, putting your pick out on is dead property right now, there's no other use for it. So I don't think anybody here will have any questions or that's concerned, that, that's not going to approach on anyone. We have to live this public yet, but, you know, it doesn't appear that we're going to crookie fly anybody. And I guess there has to be a certain amount of trust involved here that you're going to continue to be a, a good neighbor. And you'll try to do the right thing for the community.
And I think they've demonstrated that in this.
Uh, I concur, but we, we have to look out for the community. And this is one of our opportunities to sit face to face with people and business owners and do that, yeah, so.
In my opinion, Tom Carter, my son, my brother, my, we're not going nowhere, that's going to be our. So that's our life, that's our livelihood, our families, my sons, our, you know, poor kids. We understand what you want, and we all want to see. I think I've got the financial numbers right now.
It's good to have the conversation.
So I, I'm just asking. To get off of what you need to approve everything, yes, down the line, I, you know, I can walk in about the end to the county. And then you're just at, and you have to go there, but I just have to sign and move forward and, and see where I'm at. Again, we're here with you, we're not.
You're having the lock consolidation of the, one of the recommendations that you have.
Yeah, we're there. We were going to do the two for one, if, if possible. With the lock consolidation, when we're looking at, you have all three locks of one, two, and then three down below. The third lot is such a significant drop off, I would have to consolidate two. I have really a lot of time to break, it would make more sense, I think, down the line.
Are they connected?
They're, they're not, I think, actually, there's a.
And they got that set?
And we can bring home, if it goes up, we find it.
You understand, on, on the very side, if you have one lot, it's easier for us.
We have two, but three, actually, we're getting there. And if that would work, I, I would make, I think, down the line, it'd be easier for everybody, really, you know, if, if, then, yes, you know.
You don't tend to sell that building something.
No, no, not at all, I mean, if it ever happened, I mean, I mean, for half a permanent, and then I would have to sell it. Yeah, I, I would like to do the two, consolidate the two.
Two, and two point, one point.
One, one point, one, and lot two, I'm sorry.
And they all own by the same entity?
Yeah, they're all owned by the same entity.
They're all owned by the same entity, nobody from our line?
Essentially are. I mean, essentially, act are, yeah.
Really just for the.
It's for the convenience of the tax assessor and the bills.
Can you grab one lot? Two oh one, right?
One oh one, two, and two point oh one.
But you, you're proposing just to consolidate point oh one and two, is that correct?
One point oh one and two, yes.
And what's the reason of these three?
If we ever did that down part of that building, the older, the older part of the building, if we ever decided to build in the upper part and take that and eliminate it and convert it to the upper part. We can carve that up, make it a retail, do something with it down the line, I'm just saying.
Would be easier for them to pay.
That's what we, that's what we do.
One thing consolidated, they, they.
Do you have the, like, for various?
Yes, and it would be exactly that.
It shouldn't be in a different entity's name anyway, to make sure that it doesn't get done automatically, isn't that like something that the assessor can automatically do it for all these?
No, typically, they won't do that. The only time you can do that is the old days, is that all the lots are bought at the same time. But if they were being spewed in, they'll let them that way, that's why we require consolidation.
Yeah.
The fact that now they're just, they did something like that, they have to come back to the board.
Just something by the lot law.
That's okay.
Now, if they consolidated them all, say that they wanted to sell all lot two oh one, now it's all one lot, they have to something like that.
What were you just thinking?
So even if they were to, like, develop this track, so, they'll, they'll be there, that would request that approval.
Yeah, I, I meant if they wouldn't be selling it. They would never.
And what's a square foot to commercial lot? I know they concede that, yeah. I mean, if they wanted to sell one lot.
What does that even?
Oh, it's only six half square feet.
So that property, you know.
What's the board's process, all or the two?
Anybody else have anything?
I'm fine with the, I mean, I get it, it is a normal thing, and you were the state damage used to be?
Yep, both A Ds used to be.
John, what about these waivers in your, your review by the notice, are they? Your road permit?
Can you, question, do they have a storm pipe, you guys doing on the lot break?
Yeah, there's a storm pipe.
That is?
Yeah, there's an inlet that's out here, the area where we're putting our dishes, maybe it's out here. And it has a storm pipe that extends into, and ties into an inlet on the Heritage store site, and then it runs out to the D O T, uh, storm cellar, or D O T county storm cellar, I guess. We should be out of conversation about that. Uh, yes, I think, are we? And apparently, I think it was sand up there.
So, do you have any knowledge as to whether there was ever an agreement, agreement reached with Heritage with respect to that storm pipe?
Um, my understanding, I talked to my uncle, I talked to him, my grandfather purchased the building back in the sixties. Sometime in late sixties or seventies, Mr. Heritage, they agreed, he needed just one drain, and he put his second building on back here. He asked to, uh, use his storm break, tiny storm break, they had paper drawn up, he paid a dollar, it was a check for it. This was back, this follow from, my grandfather was my uncle. Where the paperwork is, is the easement of the drum, I would have no idea.
So you don't know whether it was formalized into a formalized?
I don't know it was formalized into a, into the title or anything like that, I just know of it from hearing it through. That's where, that's how we just made things up, where is it? We had agreement with Heritage, we had the agreement. Firstly, I didn't find that was in the details, about a check for a, check for a dollar, we were going underground, we had no problem.
I suppose it was nothing.
Back in the time.
I'll order a trial report, and I'll provide it to the engineer, that he's finished recording, that will show up.
John, is your fear if that is going to be, is it going to cut off again?
Wow. It should be, right?
Yeah.
If Heritage went in there and locked the wall, this is not right, so they have very much problem. Yeah, but he would hope that they would want it.
Yeah, I'm sure they had a protective.
If this is something I never knew, I would still be bringing this up.
Yeah, I mean, after fifty years, we couldn't really do that, there would be a lot of litigation about that.
Yeah, it's been there, isn't it?
Directly, yeah.
Is there any other questions from the board members? Rowan, do you have anything else?
Now, the other thing, John, you have, if loading space location restricted from the front yard, is that another, all barriers that they need, or is that?
That's another existing.
Okay, is, is that the existing?
Yes.
I think barriers is that, uh, just had, kind of five of all the barriers.
I think they're, they look like they're all pre-existing, except for the one side yard where, where you're. New building, uh, you're asking for nine point four five feet, or that feet is required.
Exactly.
That's the only really new variance you're requesting, it looks like, from my view.
Yes, that's exactly.
Everything else is pre-existing.
That's a system of the existing.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's actually a little further right, but really, that's more of a function of, of, of pre-engineer buildings, eighty feet long, and we're attaching to the existing wall, and it's just six inches shorter. So that, that's really what the, the reason maybe not that, that, or so.
John, any else?
There were, most of my comments had a circularity.
At this point in time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this application, this application only, please come forward and state your name and microphone.
Say no one responding on, like, the public portion of the meeting.
All right, motion made, second, the public portion of the meeting. Uh, I'd like to have a motion on the floor to approve this site plan and the attached variances. Motion by Mayor Calvadas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ockley.
Don't need attached variant.
Move forward.
The, the variances set forth in John's letter, uh, are, are we the ones that are pre-existing?
Yes, yeah.
Thirty-nine, five, nine, D, rear yard setback, ten feet required, where five point two five feet is pre-existing. Uh, another, a, a side yard setback, ten feet required, there requesting nine point four five feet on the one side of the building. The other, or the new structure, where I think three point two two feet on the old structure, it's pre-existing. Uh, a residential buffer where twenty feet is required, five point two feet is requested, because that's a pre-existing condition also. Uh, maximum coverage, ordinance says fifty percent is allowed, it's a hundred percent now, it apparently always has been, so that's, that's not changing, it's pre-existing. Uh, the parking buffer, once again, twenty feet is required, no buffer exists, but that's a pre-existing also. Uh, the, uh, the ordinance statute regarding the minimum number of parking spaces, we're saying they're giving a variance, that what's there now, I think there's twenty-one on the side, and there's some of the retail, I forget.
Twenty-one here, retail, and then just, uh, it's real scramble parking, but we've got enough space for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
We've got another twenty-one spots there right now.
Yeah, we, we.
I just want to say that, so we know that's.
Twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one places minimal, that, that's what's existing now, and it, it, it looks like additional parking could be provided, but.
That's all there right now.
That's all there is right now.
Yes, there is just a form of.
There are new variances for pre-existing conditions, so they can continue with that parking plan. And then, uh, a variance from loading space location, there, it's not supposed to be, it's restricted from the front yard, where loading space is proposed within the front yard.
That's pre-existing.
And that, once again, is essentially pre-existing. Now, it is a condition also that the applicant has indicated that we'll provide strikeback plan for the parking lot, which has been marked in as exhibit eighty-three, a site rendering number two, it was categorized as. And that the applicant's engineer wore coordinates that strikeback plan with our engineer, John. So that would be, uh, a, a, one of the conditions.
Any county approval?
Anything, any county, state, or any other approval which may be required.
So the board's okay with the strikeback plan unless the county requires something, right?
And, well, I'm, I'm.
Oh, yeah, this should be your final, and this would.
This is my very final.
Eliminatory and final proof.
Yeah, unfortunately, it, it really is dictated to us by the county, I mean, they, they can dictate what transpires there. And, you know, all we can really do.
Well, John says we could make our, our, our condition.
But, well, by the same token, if the county says, we don't want that, it doesn't matter what we say, that's for us, so I think all we can.
Yeah, but it could be a blend.
That is, county wouldn't be minded, would it?
I think we, I mean, I just think we trust, trust the relationship between the Lux Bakery, the Rocco Mora family, in running.
If the county doesn't drastically change what was shown here, the date says we can then operate it back and show the board.
Right, I mean, yeah.
That's what I just planned, we, we do that, we make a note, we'll do a plan, and then, you know, we'll prove it, the D O T gets ahold of it.
Right.
And now that we've configured driveways and things like that, we can, don't bring applicants back to the board, we, I just report to the board, this is what the outside agency requires.
Since nineteen fifty-four, a lot of things have evolved and changed, oh, picture.
So, now, we're just going to trust them as good neighbors and do the right thing for them, do the right thing for the community, try to make it as safe as you can with the kids, because we don't like getting involved in school nowadays. And that's what, that's what we.
Right there, too, every morning, I, I let all my employees know, she's out there, we put her in that one spot there, they don't know, any time I'm there, and at two o'clock, she gets off the side.
Or rather, yeah.
After every morning, she's there every morning and every night. She has, she'll let me know if a driver went right by or anything.
I think our, I, I definitely. Anything else from anyone who read? The motion?
I'm ready.
Okay, again, do we have a motion on the floor?
The motion is.
May I have a roll call, please?
Edna?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yeah.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowsky?
Yeah.
Fullerton?
Yeah.
Paul Burley?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Calvadas?
Yes. Yes. Congratulations, guys, I hope you have a nice project, I wish you all the best, and hope to get that open in there.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
Just forward to Congress, maybe you can get something done.
Perhaps, this is where it's. We're going to recess for about five minutes before we go into good welfare, um, next quarter of business is, yeah, we have two questions, we have two questions that we're going to read into the record.
Yes, um, we have a first resolution, Rizzo Valenti, Inc., for two sixty-three Union Avenue, block one twenty-nine lot nine, that was a resident of our one residential district. And this was an approval of both variances for lot width and floor area of the proposed structure. As we indicate, as our ordinance said, sixty feet was required, this is a pre-existing fifty feet, it demonstrated, uh, most of the places, lots along that street were fifty feet. Uh, and that was approved, if you want me to read the entire resolution, but that's just a synopsis. That's what you're, you're voting to memorialize.
All right, Jake, we have a roll call, voting to memorialize the, uh, Rizzo Valenti resolution. Got a motion by Scott, second by, uh, Mayor Calvadas.
The, uh, second resolution.
Yes. Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowsky?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Paul Burley?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Calvadas?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, the latest resolution is Bonapal City, O L C, six-ten North Black Horse Pike, block thirty-eight, lot six, six oh one, six oh two, and six oh three, and six oh four, in Marshalltown. This was an amended site plan approval and final site plan approval with both variances and waiver, this was the, uh, when, this was last heard, when they were seeking final site plan approval, they amended to, uh, uh, downsize the size of that one building. Uh, after discussions with, uh, with the board. Uh, the both variances and waivers had previously been granted at the preliminary approval, but this final site plan is, uh, is, is based on their amended submission. And plans which still have to be sent to John for sign-off that they were reducing the size of the building.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution in private, please.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Dickinson?
Second.
And Mr. Chowsky, roll call, Jim.
Edna?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowsky?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Paul Burley?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Calvadas?
Yes.
I, I was wanting to say yes.
Okay, and you? Okay, I just wanted to, uh, report back on a little bit of old business, uh, Mayor Calvadas and myself, in conjunction with Joyce Pinto, if you recall. There was a gentleman named Mr. Gambino that came in last month, uh, speaking about the A-frame signs. Um, we, we at that point in time explained to Mr. Gambino, um, that the Black Horse Pike is a state right-of-way, that we do not have the authority to allow them to put anything in the state right-of-way. After we had that meeting, um, he did contact Congressman Robert Andrews' office. Mayor and I have, uh, had some different conversations with, uh, Caroline, who, who works in Mr. Andrews' office. Uh, she was not able to help us because, um, they only do things on a federal level, uh, this is a state matter. And I spoke to Mr. Rowan about this, and he has also indicated to me that Phil Moen, uh, from Senator Moore Cross's office, contacted him because we were trying to get something, something done for all these business owners on the, uh, state right-of-way on the Black Horse Pike. Um, and, uh, Mr. Moen was advised of the problem, and he is actively looking into it as of this past Monday. I think all we can do at this point in time is perhaps relax our enforcement a little bit from Mr. Rowan's, uh, recommendation on until such time as we can get a rendering from the state as to if they're going to grant any of the, to these business owners on the Black Horse Pike. I think, I think we all agree that, um, it is a tough, a tough, uh, place to have business without the proper sign to show. Again, I guess that would be something that we would, with, uh, the entire board's, uh, agreeance, we would recommend to Mayor and Council that perhaps we'd relax our enforcement on that particular thing until such time as we can, uh, hear back from Senator Moore Cross's office.
Especially in light, I think, we are, we're reviewing our sign ordinance anyway, we're in the process, which, from, what this board has spoken about, those regulations might be relaxed for our businesses along the pipe to allow little A-trains on a, on a, a case-by-case basis, I, I think, so. Although we can't advocate, if we go in for something, you might want to.
Relax.
Relax it or just take into consideration the, the needs of the business folks, and also that we might be changing our ordinance anyway, which might ultimately permit it. So, and hopefully, the state will come back and say, look, we don't really care what's in our right-of-way.
Right.
And that'll give us a lot more, a lot more leeway.
Now, what do you think, um, our liability, for lack of a better word, would be? Uh, I think we should, if we're going to relax our enforcement on this, I think we should have some standard of what the size of the sign should be, I don't think it should be a free-for-all, where we just say, you can have whatever you want.
Certain size.
I mean, if we're, if we're going to recommend.
One of the other criteria, as your person would be, uh, that if he proceeds to be our enforcement officer, as long as pedestrians aren't impeded, or it's not causing a safety hazard. Um, obviously, we can't say if it is, that that should be enforced, but where it isn't, as I said, on a case-by-case basis, we might have to address that.
How would we go about that?
It's our sign ordinance, it's a requirement.
But how would we, how would we go about setting a standard for the size of the sign, and setting a standard for installation of that sign without having any ordinance?
Yeah, you really can't, you, we can't set.
We have to do it before, they, they exist in the board.
But they were, they are, or they weren't permitted.
They weren't permitted.
They weren't permitted at all.
But were they there?
Um, um, place, place we've seen them, yes.
We just, when we get in this, you said that our five old businesses closed down, because they weren't getting any.
No, but my point is that businesses have these signs.
Right. So I guess, yeah, I'm, I'm standing. Mr. Mike, would you go up front, please?
Sure.
Thank you. What is, what is your opinion on, um, how, how comfortable or not comfortable are you with trying to give some leeway until we get, uh, the answers from Senator Moore Cross's office and are able to redo our sign ordinance?
Well, in consideration, it's almost like you have to suspend the ordinance, uh, I understand what you're saying, it's case-by-case basis, it's a different, in the past, that pedestrian, but you're going, you're going to have to set some kind of standards if you don't suspend the ordinance due to the fact that type of size, whether the, uh, sign has to be weighted, do you create a safety hazard, I'm going to need some kind of criteria to judge what the.
Right. I, I agree, I, I want a free-for-all, I don't want a, uh, six-by-six sign out in front of the pizzeria, saying, you know, slicing the coke a dollar for the time, we, you know, we're looking to do the.
Because I can tell you from absolute experience, as sure as the first sign goes up, my opponent will be as it has been, bringing with somebody in the, uh, in the borough saying, I sold the sign, because they see, they call me when they're off.
Right.
Now, so, and your first question to me would be, what is now permissible?
Right.
What are you just?
That's a fair question.
And, and my response has to be something that, whether, you know, certainly, uh, you might cancel, what direction would they want as a temporary?
Mr. Rowan, can we, can we do a temporary amendment to our ordinance while?
We can, we can, I mean, cancel it. But if, 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 we don't have any in our ordinance.
Hardness is very vague, it's.
Free pages.
How about for temporary sign?
Temporary. Allow anything, and, and Mr. Mecca, and Mr. Mike, basically, we're not forced to the idea, they're not allowed, we're not letting people put them on. And, uh, the fact that they are on state road, that poses another problem, they put them on sidewalk, and, right, they're not secure, now they're blowing, and things like that. Uh, this, this board or the council has to, has to sit down and pass an ordinance, we have to amend the sign, so that's what's going to. Yes, but I guess my, uh, one of the primary concerns is the safety issue, which is, as Rowan could say, is what, what do we do when there is a sign that, let's say, is allowable during this period of suspension, when something is, uh, on the books? And a sign goes out, and you're impacting a pedestrian or motor vehicle, now we've got a situation where you have liability, where you have something that you haven't enforced, but you're more or less allowing it, and it causes, you know, accident or injury to someone. That's my, my major concern, certainly the aesthetics is, uh, is certainly an issue, but the life safety and impact.
Right.
The, the, or pedestrian traffic is certainly a part of the concern.
So, we're kind of back to square one, a little bit where the, where we're boxed in with the, with the state right-of-way?
I think, since we were going, and I don't know what, if there's been any, in our discussions, what, what, what do you allow, or?
You know, since, uh, this board's looking at it, the council was going to in September, there's a few ordinances that the council's going to submit to the board for the, we're going to look at, regards to land use type of things, and then hopefully we'll get some of this done up.
Maybe, maybe, maybe Senator Moore Cross will get back those by then, and get, and get, take great relief from the state.
Okay with that, that they're, they're not really seeking enforcement of signs in their right-of-way, then at least we would have a little more leeway, then we still have.